Well, welcome to the Public Safety Veterans Subcommittee. We would start with the call to order. Do we have a motion to approve May's 14, 2014 minutes?
I'll move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it passes. And item number three is called to the public, and we have a couple cards. We have Peggy Neely. Come on down. It's kind of odd, you can sit at the table.
Good, thank you.
It's kind of odd to see you over there.
It is, isn't it? Well, I think you all know that...
Excuse me.
Oh, technology now, huh? You even moved downstairs from upstairs. Well, I think you all know that you haven't seen...
Actually on television, so watch it. Watch what you say.
Good morning. Well, I think you know that there hasn't been a lot of issues that concern me a lot. You guys have done a great job of moving forward with the city. You've had some tough times. But I'm very concerned, and I'm here today to talk about the police reorganization and precinct rebounding. And so what I wanted to do was just talk to you a little bit about what I believe hasn't been being provided to the public and to you, the council. And that is the calls for service, priority one, two, and three calls. And I think without you having that information, and Councilwoman Williams can correct me, but it seemed to me that on a, at least a quarterly basis, we used to receive that information by precinct. And back in 2010, when we were looking at making changes, some of the call for service twos in the northern area were some of the highest calls that we had, and we needed to make adjustments. So just let me kind of give you a summary of what's going on. There are 517 square miles approximately in the city of Phoenix. District two has 110 square miles, and I would say that District one is approximately the same or a little more, making those two districts approximately half of the city's square miles. And the proposal that's being put on the table today, or that I understand that is being put out there, is that the rebounding would come somewhere around Thunderbird, across the city, and it would go north with one precinct. And I have to ask you, how can you cover that many square miles with one precinct? And I have a lot of grave concerns about where that's going. You know, I know, I voted for the efficiency study, and I think there have been a lot of great things that have come out of that. But we have moved away from being community-based policing. We've moved away from worrying about our calls for service. In this proposal, you also are looking to remove Maryville. Maryville has the highest level of priority one calls in the city, or had. We wouldn't know because we don't get those statistics. So I'm here today to say, please get those information. Ask for that information for the last year for every precinct. I'm going to put in a public records request because I believe the public deserves to know. I'm here today to say, don't let this thing roll over us without having proper information. They can take that calls-for-service information and retool it. Thank you for your time. I will be seeing more of you. Thanks.
Thank you, Peggy. And we'll make sure to get that information. I think it's valuable information for all of us to know.
Thank you.
We have Joel Klar. You can sit, you can go and sit down.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the panel.
Hang on.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, member of the, members of the council.
My name is Joel Klar, and I'm the president of the Phoenix Law Enforcement Association, and I just wanted to come before you and inform you of the public safety initiative that was dropped by the Phoenix Law Enforcement Association as it relates to police officer staffing. As you know, public safety begins with officer safety. It is no secret that the Phoenix Police Department is significantly and critically understaffed by approximately 520, 540 officers, fewer on the street today than there was in 2009. In 2009, the city of Phoenix, police leaders went to the community and asked for a bond election to increase the precincts by two additional precincts. That passed overwhelmingly. Since that time, we've been unable to fully staff those precincts. We are also, as previously mentioned by the other speaker, we are in the process of reducing patrol precincts based, predicated solely and exclusively upon the insufficient manpower staffing of the Phoenix Police Department. This initiative, we believe, will help move the city in the direction to provide a safe work environment for its police officers, as well as provide the staffing levels of the Phoenix Police Department that were mutually and collaboratively agreed upon back in 2009 by the community, the city, and the police leadership. We think it's a good proposal. We think that it gives flexibility to the council, to the police department, to manage that deployment. But we think it's critical, and we think it's certainly the right thing to do. So that is why we're moving forward on this issue. I don't know if you have any questions, or if you're permitted to take questions. I'd be more than happy to answer them.
I'm not sure if we could during call to the public, but if you'd like to sit down, and if we have any questions in any of the agenda items, we can call you back up to answer those questions for us.
We, I certainly will be able to stay by and available for questions if you have any. And again, we'd like to ask in the future for the, this subcommittee's support in that staffing issue for the Phoenix Police Department. Thank you.
Now, thank you, Joel. And that's all the cards that we have for call to the public. Our next items are item four through 13, our consent items. No presentations are planned, but however, there's any questions for my colleagues, staff's prepared to answer any of those questions.
I have one quick question, Mr. Chair. On the BlockWatch grant, I believe it read, is there somebody I can ask? There were some that were disputed, and I believe everything is but settled, but I wanted to make sure there isn't anything outstanding before we make this finalized.
Yes. Scott's our supervisor for the neighborhood BlockWatch grants.
Chairman Noakowski, Councilwoman Williams, yes, all of the appeals have been heard, and the committee has taken action on all of those.
And how much total money did you spend?
This year, the total amount is $1,000,005,000.
And how much do you have in reserve?
So we're just shy of about $45,000.
In reserve, though, there's only about $80,000 right now.
Okay, so you're anticipating...
That's additional to the 1.2 that is budgeted every year for the grant process.
Thank you. Case side mood, items four through 13. Oh, never mind.
I have a quick question on the BlockWatch...
Absolutely.
...grant. When it says Oversight Committee recommendations, this is when they vetted the different grants and determined which neighborhoods were going to receive them?
Chairman Noakowski, Councilwoman, pass or that is correct.
Okay, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions on any of those items already that we...
I'll have a, make the motion to approve items four through 13.
We have a motion to approve items four through 13?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Item passes, and now we're on item 14 through 15. This is information only, no presentations are planned. However, staff's here to answer any questions. Does any of my colleagues have any questions on items 14 or 15?
You're going to shoot, yeah, I have a question.
Absolutely.
On Operation Safe Summer, is PD taking the school resource officers and use them in this program, or how are you operating this year?
Councilmember, this is, these are, we've been doing Operation Safe Summer for quite a while now. Let me introduce Lieutenant Jim Brigette, who's over the operation this, I believe this is his third year?
Second year.
Second year, Jim.
Yes, I'm Lieutenant Jim Brigette. I'm the Operation Safe Summer leader. And yes, we're combining school resource officers with the Maryville Target Enforcement Squad, and then one patrol officer from each precinct to make the Operation Safe Summer Task Force.
Okay, and you're still going out into the desert and looking for the parties?
We do a variety of things, ma'am. We, we do a little bit of hotspot policing first. We look at high crime areas. Basically, we tour each precinct by week, and we look at hotspots in that precinct. Towards the evening hours, then we are targeting the youth alcohol and youth party type of thing. So sometimes it takes us into the desert, sometimes it's into neighborhoods where we're either breaking up dispersing youth parties. We take enforcement on that as necessary.
I think one thing, Councilmember, that I think on Operation Safe Summer that really enhances is a visible view of our officers in uniform in different areas. And again, I want to stress that we'll be visiting every council district to ensure, because, I mean, let's be frank, every council district does have an area that needs to be looked at from a hotspot enforcement concept. So we're visiting all the council districts and continue to move forward on that issue.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Anything, any other questions?
The packet mentioned that you're visiting malls, shopping centers, and water parks, too, and that you're conducting curfew and liquor education. How does that work if you're standing outside of a movie theater?
Well, that is, it's kind of, the Operation Safe Summer has two parts of it. Basically, the education side and the enforcement side. So the education side, that's all SROs, and they do visit shopping malls, movie theaters, they go to summer schools, and they talk about the perils of drinking and driving and youth alcohol issues. So I have 10 officers assigned to that. They work a different shift. And then the enforcement side, we work four to two, 4:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m., and the educational side works nine, p, 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. So they hit, the educational side starts in the morning and runs till early evening, and then the enforcement sides start at 4:00 p.m. and work until 2:00 a.m. to deal with the parties.
And Councilmember, just one other point on that. Item 19 on the police programs in schools. When we brief on that topic, you'll see the, also a tie-in on the alcohol issues that we talked about and the dangers of making people aware, at least for our young adults, what that means.
So the education is not happening at the movie theaters or the water parks?
No, the movie theaters will come into play on item 19 for just a bit.
Okay, I'll be patient.
All right. Now, we can answer that, yes. It will be in the movie theaters.
Yes, they're hitting...
Oh, the, oh, the PSA.
PSAs, yes, ma'am.
Yes, South Mountain High School.
There you go, there you go.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
In this, and we're looking at underage drinking, curfew, and violent crime issues. Are we also looking at, and I'm not sure if I'm going to say this correctly, so please correct, correct me if I'm wrong, also human trafficking?
Not so.
In the sense of being able to recognize in some of the, I guess, homes or areas that are...
Yeah, that Targeted Enforcement Squad, the 86 Zebra, that's, that's one of their, their duties, but primarily it's, it's the youth, youth crimes. But if we run into human trafficking, yeah, of course, we, we do it all on OSS. And, you know, if it, if it has to do with youth, youth victimization, we will deal with it on OSS, yes.
And on that topic, Councilmember, the, the issue of prostitution and teenage prostitution in some of these hotspot areas is going to be, it's going to come to our attention. So the coordination between Operation Safe Summer and really all our officers in being able to not only contact but work with our vice unit on that issue is 24/7.
Yeah, I was just hoping that there's cross-training so that we come across certain paths at certain times that we're able to recognize it and say, okay, get the right person over here or do the right thing.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, got it.
Absolutely, great question.
Yes.
Any, any other questions?
We've been trying to work to clean up some of the apartment buildings in our district, and there aren't enough resources for that. And I guess I was reading this and saying, as if we have resource, apartment buildings with drug crimes and more violent crimes, and then we're patrolling movie theaters as well?
Now, the, some of the locations that we go to, best way to say this, there's a number of areas in the city that may fall into, in the category of entertainment districts. Certainly malls and places where people congregate is locations that, that also need our police attention. They're kind of different from hotspots in relation to violent crime. There are places where people congregate, and sometimes those people are young adults who, if we don't go by there and visit, you will have a shooting out there. You will have something that, that goes from an alcohol party to a bigger issue of somebody getting hurt out there. So that's why our presence also includes those locations in there. High priority enforcement locations is, is a primary tool of what I want my officers to work on. Persons, places, behaviors, high priority offense locations and high priority enforcement locations are those categories. Sometimes, inner-dominant districts fall in that category.
Okay, so I make sure we're prioritizing, given it can't be everywhere at once.
That's correct.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chief.
Mm-hmm.
And with that, do we have a motion?
I don't think we're posting for action.
It's just information, right?
Right.
All right, so we'll go to item number 16. I think it's, Chief, you're still up.
Yes. I mean, one of the things that we wanted to make sure, and this has been a, a process that's really been long overdue for the Phoenix Police Department. One of the things that I discovered when I came into the Phoenix Police Department was that we had crime statistics in relation to UCR, but we didn't have crime statistics specific to officer deployment. And that was an issue that was very critical for me to make sure that, in order for us to fight crime, we've got to know where crime's at 24/7 and up to the date. So that's one of the things that we worked on. This is the second component. This is sharing the information with our public so they can make decisions in relation to not only opening businesses but quality-of-life issues, and allows us to team up with them in the shared responsibility of fighting crime. We want to be transparent. We want people to be able to look at their crimes in their area. Now, granted, these statistics are a bit delayed, and that's done so, so we can address crime issues and stay in front of these issues. Some of these other things you're going to see about these crime stats is you're going to see that some of them are not specific to the location. We do that for their privacy. But with that, let me turn it over to Karen, and Karen will tell you a little bit about our program.
Good morning. We have, I don't know if you remember, but we went through a whole RFQ process, and then in the fall of 2012, we contracted with a vendor to provide public crime mapping stats. And it's been a long process, and we've been coming back and giving you updates, but we are live, and we wanted to show you what the functionality is that our community members finally have, and we're very excited about it. So what you'll see, it's already live on our website. So if you go to Public Safety and click on it, and then you go get crime statistics, and you'll see we have different ways you can get crime statistics. You can go to the crime mapping, and this will show dots on a map, and I will show you exactly what Chief Garcia is talking about in terms of, we're keeping the victim's specific address confidential but giving the community members enough information that they can see 100 block addresses. So I can know it's 100 West, you know, Washington, but I don't know it's 123 West Washington. So I'm, I'm allowing the community to know some information but not too much information to affect the victim. So when you log in, you'll see, and we have canned slides in case this slows down, but you will basically see exactly what Chief Garcia is talking about. This is a regional data set, and this is one of the reasons why this company was chosen. You can see Scottsdale Crime, and you can see Tempe Crime because they're part of this. They share data. So community members in Phoenix that live on the borders also get that opportunity to see crime patterns across. And when you lock, what, log in, you'll see Phoenix doesn't look like it has any crime. That is that 14-day delay, and that's intentional. Some of that is so that we can review it, detective, make sure, did this crime really happen or is it unfounded before it goes for the public? So it can be cleaned a little bit before it's up here. The other thing is there are a lot of times where investigations...
Karen, let me just stop just a quick. Folks, the importance for our detectives to review cases, sometimes statist, or, the call for service will come out as a robbery. We get there, and it's not a robbery at all. As a matter of fact, there may not even be an offense there. So for us to just put statistics out there and allow citizens to look at them on a daily basis without washing them, I think it's very important for us to stay, to stay in that process.
Yeah, so if it's an unfounded crime, it gets changed. If, you know, if it got upgraded to a different kind of crime, it gets changed, and you'll see the correct crime out there. And, but what you do, so all you have to do is extend our date range and go past more than 14 days, and then you'll see all the crime. And we are focused on transparency. People may want to look at trends. There's 10 full years of crime data out here, and it's all the UCR Part I crimes, so they get all the major crime types. And then as you zoom in, we'll see if this works, as you zoom in, the crime, the dots will change character so you can see like a fist for an assault and a house for burglary, so you can quickly get a feel for what's happening in each area just by looking at the crime icons. And we may have to switch over to the slides if this is going to take a while.
Who did, who, how do you determine what goes on there? What's the criteria?
So it is the eight UCR Part I crimes. So it's the one that usually is compared city to city, the formal FBI guidelines on what are the Part I main crimes.
At the end of the year, these statistics are captured.
Yeah, it's homicide, rape, robbery, ag assault, burglary, theft, motor vehicle theft, and arson are all up here.
Okay.
It's all the Part I crimes, Councilmember.
Okay. And then what you'll see, so now...
It shows right here.
Yeah, you can zoom in, and you can see what they are. So that fist, like I said, is an assault. So we'll have, go ahead, if you click on it, you can go in and get more information. Was this a house? Was this a bar? Where is this happening? So the community members can, can look and get some more information about each incident. You'll see how it is scrubbed. So it's 20XX West Washington, not the specific victim's address. But you do get daytime type of premise, you know where it's happening, and then what type of crime it is. So that information is available. Some people like to go and click on all, all the maps. Some people would prefer to do a data grid and see everything in a table. So that is available to community members as well.
What's really valuable about this program, if, if a citizen wanted to take just the burglary category for, for the month and look at it, not only will, will that individual have information to discuss with police at the community crime watch meetings, but it's a way for them to say, hey, we've got a burglar working in an area, as a community through next door, whatever, community process that's available for them. There's communication now between the community and each other and the police.
And I forgot to mention, that was perfect, you can turn on and off with little checkboxes you can see on the left-hand side.
What do you want to see?
I only want to see burglaries. I only want to see assaults, whatever you care about, yeah. In addition, if you want to look at something besides the table, you can go into the Analytics tab, and you will get charts. So if you wanted all burglaries, you could see which days a week, times a day are they happening, so you get some more analytics.
And this is important because it gives people an opportunity to develop business plans if they're trying to grow economic development in their area or they're moving into a community, a business. This is shared information that allows them to build their own chart and say, hey, look, this is a good area to build something at. I want to open this business up. This is information that allows them to do that. And, and again, as a community, allows them to talk to each other as to what's going on with us.
And then the last tab across the top is metadata. So this one will tell you which types of crimes are loaded, which are not, and if there was a hiccup in the data load or whatever, it will tell them what the date range is of all the data that's available to the community, both overall, all your data, and in what little view you've zoomed into. So what type of data range do I have? The last thing I want to show you is back on the map, and I forgot to show this earlier. So if you go back actually to the map, you can do hotspot maps on here as well. So a lot of times, people want to see a hotspot. Well, show me all my burglaries, and then where are they? There is under Analytic Layers, and there's a hotspot map, so you can go ahead and turn it on. And you can get, for whatever crime types you have chosen, the density map. Okay, so that's available as well. So this is one application that was wanted and requested, and so you can see the icons on the map. The other application was built specifically by the vendor for City of Phoenix based on the old Gridstats application, if you guys remember that one, that provided counts by a neighborhood. And this application, we're not doing a live demo. Oh, I forgot, I'm sorry, thank you. You can, from this other application, from the first one. So there's two for us for the city. And you can get crime alerts. So if I wanted around my house, I can get a crime alert sent to me as an email. Anytime a crime happens, I can pick. I only care about these types of crimes. I can do it around my name, my children's school. I can do that type of thing. So that's very user-friendly and that type of thing, and you can turn off your emails if you want to. So the other application, like I started to talk about, was counts by area. So counts by grid, counts by precinct, counts by council district. Those were available on the previous, it was called Gridstats site. And that was one thing that our community members, when we met with them on what types of things would you like to see in this application, they wanted that back because a lot of them have established neighborhoods. They know I, these five grids are mine, and I want to plug it in and get my crime counts every day. So what you'll see, we'll have to scroll through, these were our canned slide to get to the Gridstats one. And, oh, I have to do it, sorry. I'm like, oh, sorry.
There we go.
So it should be off at the end.
And while Karen's bringing that up, folks, Councilmember, one of these things that I would offer to all of you is, if you'd like our, our staff to go to one of your crime watch meetings and demonstrate this so the community can see it, and then be more knowledgeable about the process, we'd be happy to do that for any council district.
So this one, if you went back to that original screen, there's a second link that shows crime counts by neighborhood instead of just crimes on a map. And so this one will not run on this computer. So you do have to have an Internet Explorer version nine or higher for this particular feature to run. The sign-in is just a little bit different, or you can link through our phoenix.gov website. But basically, all you do now is you pick, now it's area. I can turn on grids if I want, or I can turn on beats if I want, and then I can type in or select on the map which area I would like to get crime counts for. So all you're doing is picking your area and then picking, then you click on the data grid, and now you get UCR violent crimes, property crimes, Part II crimes, and calls for service in whatever area you selected. And again, you can get, just like before, analytics charts and stuff for the same. This is now for that whole area. So those are the two applications. They are live and functioning now, and we're, we're very happy to be able to offer it finally for our community members.
Any questions?
Councilwoman Williams?
Okay. On, if I wanted to know what crimes have occurred from January to now, from I-17 to 51st Avenue on Thunderbird Road, could I find it on that?
You would have to select the area on the map, yes. So you could either zoom to the area, or you could go to that other one and choose which beats or which grid.
But it has to be part of your...
You would map it, you, I want this area, I want to include this area, I want to include this area. You would map it out.
Oh, it's more than just the road, though?
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah. So, anything else?
Could Councilwoman Neely find calls for service using this tool?
Calls for service, yeah, it would, it does not have response times. So her question about response times is not on there, but it has a count of calls.
Mm-hmm. And it went, when did it go live, and what have been the uses of this?
It's been like a beta live for about a month, and we've been working through stuff, but this is the official announcement that, yeah, and the links are now up and all that type of thing.
Wonderful.
So it's live now?
It is. That was live right now, right on the Internet, so, yeah.
And again, we, not only do we welcome the opportunity to visit any of your council districts, we'll be scheduling some of these on our own as well.
And I forgot to mention, you can get it on your phone. So it has a download on my phone app, so it's very convenient.
There's an app for that.
Yep, exactly.
And my question is, what, what's the time delay for other cities like Tempe, Mesa?
It varies by city. So some of them have a week delay, and some literally load yesterday's today, and they're not concerned about, trying to make sure that...
And Council, let me make a point on that. I'm certainly open to, to increasing it. I liked the fact that, I like the opportunity for detectives to look at the offense and make sure it's there, but I'm certainly open to alter those dates forward or back, whichever you prefer.
And then why not post official status versus...
Again, again, because it allows our detectives an opportunity to look at a crime and say whether or not it was a legitimate crime or not. Was it really a burglary, or was it a criminal trespass, or was it a criminal mischief? Those things, when people start making counts and they start presenting this thing as fact to someone, and it changes two weeks later because our detective looked at it, it could present a problem for somebody.
I was just thinking that we have so many, I mean, in our districts, Phoenix Neighborhood Patrol, Block Watches, Neighborhood Associations, people that really engage in their community and they get that information, and they're on it just like that. So I was thinking that if there's a way for us to post it with, with a different color saying it's not confirmed yet, but there is somebody called in a burglary, and maybe it's not.
Okay.
But at least those individuals that would be using this on a daily basis would know that there's some type of red flag, and once it becomes an official...
Okay. Well, Councilmember...
Crime, then we can actually have a different color for it. I'm not sure if that's possible or...
And we'll get, we'll get with a vendor on that, but Councilmember, if, if I may suggest, why don't we look at it for three months, the way to run it? We'll come back and report the progress, and at that time, your question in relation to how we can identify those, those offenses by color will be answered. And second, whether or not we're ready to go maybe to even a week or even on day, same-day delivery.
Now, Chief, the other thing, too, is that those groups you just mentioned, BlockWatch, Neighborhood Associations, and Phoenix Neighborhood Patrol, have you met with them or are you going to have presentations set up?
And we're, we're going to, we're going to be making presentations, and we're also offering you, any group that you want us to meet with, by all means, we'll make it again in general. The, the thing about this is that from a crime watch, neighborhoods, those are easy for us to get. But if you want us to visit with some of your business groups, I think it's very critical for us to get out there as well, and we'll be happy to do that, and we'll be scheduling those either way.
Any other questions for Chief? Well, Chief, I really want to thank you for providing data. Well, Chief, I really want to thank you for providing data. I know that data, data is so important to get the, the bad people off the streets, but also providing the data for those neighborhood associations, those Block Watch groups and those Neighborhood Patrol groups that can actually use this data to help us...
Absolutely.
Go after those bad persons. So thank you so much for using technology to its fullest.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next would be item number 17. And you're still up, Chief?
And Councilman Gallego, this is the, this is actually the program, item 17, where we're going to be in theaters on PSAs. And I'm, I'm very excited. I want to introduce Sergeant Tommy Thompson, who was the creative brainchild of this. And I, I tell you what, we did it, this is, we've done it two years in a row. It has been just an outstanding, uh, community policing component for our department and our youth connecting. So Tommy?
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to be here with you to talk to me. Turn that volume on.
Does that mean we're live in the concert?
Yes, we are.
Thank you, I appreciate it. One of the things that Chief Garcia has pointed out over and over again is the fact that we, as a community, we address issues, that we work together, and that while we often enforce crimes, we've found success in our department also in preventing crimes by working with our community partners. One of the community partners we've worked with very closely on, on some of the issues is, is the fire department. They do a great job of working with us on drowning prevention as well as, as alcohol in the schools where we do the, the mock crashes, that they take the lead and set that up. But one of the things that, that's been a concern of mine over, I've been a police officer for over 30 years in the City of Phoenix now, is underage drinking. And too often, we see the consequences that follow the, the poor decisions made by some of our young people. It's just tragedy. So several years ago, under the direction of Chief Garcia, we went to the DUI abatement council and secured a grant to start an innovative program, which we call our Too Young to Drink PSA contest. That is aimed at, at helping stop underage drinking. And what essentially we did is we go to the high schools each year and we ask the schools to create PSAs, public service announcements of 30 seconds in length, no more, that deal with the dangers of underage drinking. And when we secured the grant, one of the things that, that we wanted to make sure is that we could cover the full spectrum and leave that wide open to the young people. Our message was letting young people teach each other in mediums that they understand, and that being electronic mediums. It was hoped that it was simple enough that a person that may not have the electronic equipment could use an iPhone and, and make a, a public service announcement that would, that would be effective. Again, this is, has been our second year, and, and the way the program works is we go to the high schools and allow them to create a video PSA, no longer than 30 seconds, that deals with any aspect. It could deal with driving under the influence. Far, far too often, we also see violent acts where young people are the victims of shootings or other type of, of incidents. We could even, we left it open enough that, that young people could talk about teen pregnancy if they wanted to. So really, it was left up to the creative imagination of the, the schools. Each school was invited to submit one PSA. So our hope was that a school would have a competition where perhaps different classes would create two or three or four, and then within the school, open up that dialogue and let them think about it and discuss it and choose the entry from their school, which they did. We then put those on YouTube for voting to see who wanted the, or who got the most votes. Our hope is that one day we'll have one that goes viral, that, that allows people, and, and through YouTube, it's open to where if, if students have family members or friends in New York City or, or another country, that they can look at that and share the message that they've created. Then we take those and we have a panel of media judges from the media that we allow to select what they believe are their three top picks for this. Now this year, we actually opened up a second category where we did an audio PSA, but, and it was the same 30-second limit. So it was designed more for radio. One of the interesting things is this grant that was secured was a $30,000 grant, and the majority of that goes to prizes wherein we go to the school for the video production. The first place school wins $5,000 to go to their video production program, their media relations program, their communications, their film production, whatever in that category. So it doesn't go to the young people, it doesn't go to the school to, to, to buy athletic equipment, it goes to build that school-specific program in hopes that it will further work in this area. But again, for the video production for first place, they won $5,000, $4,000 was, was for second place, and then $3,000 was for third place. For the audio, we felt it was a little bit less work, but we, but we still paid $3,000 to the, to the first place school, second place got $2,000, and third place got $1. Now the interesting thing, let me just kind of back up just one step, the DUI abatement grant, this funding actually came from excise taxes placed upon drunk drivers. So instead of it going to build jails or something of that nature, we used it and, and through the, the Governor's Office of Highway Safety, he who staffs the DUI abatement council, we, we got this funding and we sent it back into the school system in hopes that we could teach people before they got involved in this problem. We've got several, I'm only going to show you three up there. Mr. Williams, if we could start with our third place finisher, which was Metropolitan Arts. This, we could look at this, this video right here.
(phone rings)
I think he's so stupid.
911, what's your emergency?
One more, one more.
I'll be back.
Wait, no, don't wait.
You're doing it.
City, come on, please.
What do you mean you didn't take your keys?
All right, remain calm. First, can you give me an approximate location?
(screams)
Can you find a pulse?
We're going to have movie producers coming out of Phoenix, I'm telling you. Well, and there is, there is one I'll mention just briefly. Could you, now, could you do Metro Tech, Mr. Williams, please? The next one down. This was the second place finisher.
Remember, be home by 10:00.
Okay, yeah, sure, Mom. See you later.
You really think you should be driving like that, man?
Yeah, man, don't worry, it's fine, I can do it.
Victim is a 17-year-old male, multiple injuries on scene, needs immediate medical assistance.
Josh, where are you? You were supposed to be home a while ago. Call me back.
Again, keep in mind, these are high school kids that are producing together.
And now these will be in the Harkins Theater, the, the winner will be at Harkins Theater?
That's, is playing currently in Harkins Theater. That's one of the things that the chief mentioned. You brought up the issue of movie theaters. Through the grant, we procured funding so that for six weeks, the, the top finisher, which will be South Mountain, and we'll show that in just about two seconds, they actually are showing for six weeks between, or, or prior to the, the feature presentation in the movie theater. It's anticipated that 275,000 views are possible because of, of this specific program, just on this one PSA. If you can show South Mountain, I'd appreciate it.
My big brother always told me not to follow the crowd. He said, "Don't make dumb decisions to be the person that I want to be." The thing is, I want to be just like him.
When you drink, you don't just drown yourself. Stop underage drinking.
So that's the one that's playing right now as we speak in the Harkins Theater. It's actually, my partner Steve Marcos and I went to go check on it. We didn't go watch the movie, watched the...
Sure, sure, yeah, absolutely.
But again, we're looking at, at 275,000 views on that. In addition, those three, the top three, we procured funding to nominate them in the Natus Awards, the National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences, that actually awards the Emmy, but they don't have an Emmy yet for this age group, they just have school participation, and we've nominated those, so hopefully we hear more. Now I'll say that, that we've had participation from Awatuki clear on up into North Phoenix. This year, I think the furthest north was in Sandro Day O'Connor, which I believe Ms. Williams is, that is in your area there. So we've had a, a great participation. In fact, dealing with the DUI abatement council, they would like us to take our contest and go statewide this fall.
Absolutely.
Our plans have always been to do this with, in conjunction with the prom season as well as the summer.
Right, right.
So, but again, it's, it's, it's been a, a successful program. You did ask a question about, and the chief mentioned about Hollywood producers. We actually have a young man that, that is Xavier Ziegler, I believe is his name, he's from South Mountain High. And South Mountain has actually won two years in a row. And this young man is looking to pro, go forward in a career in television or, or film production. And one of the, the positive things about this program is we all know that school is important and, and we have the opportunity, when we create a resume, to use examples we've done in school. This is actually a real-world application of the skills that they've used. This is actually an opportunity for them to, to put a line on their resume to say what they've done. And hopefully, South Mountain or Metro Tech or, or Metropolitan School of the Arts will actually win something from Natus, which will even give them more of a line on their resume. But anyway, it's been a, it's been a great program. We hope to continue doing it. Again, our funding's come through the DUI abatement council.
And again, Council, this is Sergeant Thompson's idea and he's done a terrific job with it. I think it's a, it's a very strong partnership between the Phoenix Police Department and our youth and our schools. It's, it's a tremendous program.
Any questions, comments?
Thank you. It seems like you're getting students to think in a powerful way about what is the impact of underage drinking, because those were some strong images that they came up with. And we are working on underage drinking in the South Mountain area in particular where it's a problem, so it is good news that we have strong communicators. And congratulations to Phoenix Union for a very excellent showing at the awards.
Any other questions or comments?
I, I just want to congratulate you. Great idea, very powerful. And I hope that you can encourage more of the schools to participate. It's amazing, the kid power that's out there, and they're very talented.
Exactly right.
I was surprised at the studios they have available in their, in their classrooms. So they have the means to do it, but thank you again for doing this.
And Chief, I just want to thank Tommy for everything you do with the Shannon Law. I know that we have a post, a poster contest and there, actually, there are posters on a billboard and you're educating. So what's so great about this is that you have peers teaching peers, and that's where, that's where you don't end up having a, an advertisement agency trying to do a campaign. You actually have peers talking to each other. So thank you, Tommy, for always thinking outside the box. The other comment is that some of the high schools actually have those demonstrations where the police and fire department go out there and they actually have, out on their football fields, a whole scene of a, a drunk driver and what happens and all that. That'd be great to actually offer to all three of the winning high schools that they can have all their juniors and seniors go out there and actually see what goes on, because I was watching Channel 11 and it's a powerful, that demonstration that you all put together. And I want to thank the Phoenix Police Department, the firefighters for doing that and educating our kids on that.
Sure.
Thank you. So I guess, next item, Chief's still up, item number 18. Thank you, Kelly.
Council, this is Lieutenant Matt Giorgano, and he's going to be walking us through the RedFlex presentation, or red light enforcement.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the subcommittee. Thanks for having me here today. I sat before you last fall and sought your approval to go forward with a new RFP to continue our photo enforcement program in the city. I, I realize we've welcomed a few new members, so I'll take a few minutes to just give you a little bit of history of our program to give you an idea where we are and where we'd like to go in the future.
And Council, I was remiss, James Scarborough's with...
We're currently in the final year of what began as a three-year contract with RedFlex. We, we're able to exercise two one-year extensions that we exercised, so it will, is set to expire at the end of this month. Currently, we have 12 fixed intersection locations that don't get speed, only, only right on red or straight through on red violations. And then we currently deploy eight mobile speed vans that we use solely around schools while school is in session. Currently, we're deployed on a rotating basis to more than 300 schools in the city. What we have seen during the program's life is a reduction in collisions of all, of all kinds. Basically, what we're seeing is citywide, we're seeing a 13% reduction in, in intersection-related collisions, and then we're seeing a 47% reduction in intersection-related collisions that have red light cameras in them. The 13%, we're considering that a halo effect. People know their cameras out there, they don't know where they are always. I mean, they're fixed, but again, people just know they're there, so therefore they're more apt to stop on a red light, is our belief. Again, we've, we've ever seen a reduction of 8.5% in intersection collisions involving injury or death. And then injury or death intersection collisions have gone down 60% in the intersections that are actually monitored with our photo enforcement technology. We currently do our revenue based on what we consider adjudicated citations. So there's citations that where the driver either pays the fine, is found responsible during a hearing in our city court, or attends a, a approved driver safety program. When that occurs, that is when we're triggered to pay our current vendor. During the life of the program, through the end of March of this year, we've had, we've had general fund revenue of 5.8 million. We've had special revenue of 1.2 million. You'll see below what it includes, it's core technology fee, judicial collections enhancement fund, school zone assessment and the local safety fund. During that same period of time, we've, we've paid 3.9 million in state surcharges from those, from those citations. Again, 70% of those come from our fixed red light photo enforcement cameras, while 30% of the revenue comes through the mobile speed vans. Again, we pay, we pay our current vendor $34.25 for each adjudicated citation. To date, through the end of March, we've issued 62,120 citations for red light, a little over 25,000 for mobile speed enforcement. And we've paid, based on that 3425, we paid our vendor approximately $1.8 million over the life of the contract. I'm going to turn it over to James.
Chairman Noakovsky, members of the subcommittee, good morning. James Scarborough, Finance.
Good morning, James Scarborough, Finance. On behalf of the Police Department, Finance Department Procurement Division issued a new solicitation on March 13th. The scope of the new solicitation resulting contract were expanded. We included additional options to expand the program if the Police Department chose to do so for additional services, additional products and so forth. We also increased the minimum qualification requirements for the vendors. We also added additional requests for past performance information, and we included a performance security. We also had to ask for additional references, and we asked for a list of all contracts that have, all the offers have, that have ended over the last five years. The evaluation criteria included in the solicitation and that was used to evaluate the proposals, included prices and pricing, which was the predominant evaluation criteria, 40%, the scope and method of approach that was proposed by the offers, as well as their capacity, experience and past performance. So as a result of the evaluation and the recommendation from the Evaluation Committee, we're bringing forward a recommendation to award the contract to RedFlex Traffic Systems. As it was stated by the Evaluation Committee in the notes to the file, they met or exceeded all the qualifications and program requirements. They also provided a wider variety of additional photo radar services, and they had the best pricing that was received from the offers. They were 12% lower than their competitor and 9% lower than the current contract pricing.
Council, I would, Council, I would just add that I'm a big supporter of this program